Good to go.
Okay, we're calling the meeting in order and we'll start with a roll call.
Pat Ferris.
Yep.
You guys in brown?
Yeah.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Bill Gallagher.
Here.
Amy Richardson.
Here.
Chris Peroni, not here, and Jim Steel Smith.
Here.
Okay, you all with a stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America. To the right, which stands on the nation under God, visible, liberty, justice, power.
Whoever agenda, do you have a motion to improve our agenda with flexibility?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with flexibility.
Second.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes the prove the agenda with flexibility, which will let's put our minutes later in the meeting here. Um, do we have any new business, any new applications? It looks like we do. We have our hearing scheduled for seven thirty-five, we're
three minutes.
Three minutes from that, so we might just sit here for three minutes until till the, uh, the hearing time. Everybody a chance to come in, might be coming in late. We need to have a
Number of this hearing.
What is number of this hearing, this appeals hearing, is that a different number system?
Did we give it a number?
I don't think we did. How about we call this HBZA- appeal twenty-five dash oh one, does that sound reasonable?
I'll make a motion to open the hearing of HTBZA appeal twenty-five dash oh one.
I'll second. Uh, we had to roll call vote on that?
Go ahead.
Can I?
Get, get the recorder. It's got her name, so it'll help.
Pat Ferris.
Uh, aye.
Steve Eisenbrow.
Aye.
Keith Campbell.
Aye.
Bill Gallagher.
Aye.
Amy Richardson.
Aye.
Chris Peroni, it's not present, and Jim Steel Smith.
Yeah, Mr. Care is to start the, uh, the, uh, HBZA appeals twenty-five dash oh one hearing. Okay. Well, in this particular hearing, our, uh, we'd, we'd hope to have the, uh, representative from Delaware County's prosecutor's office, attorney's office, excuse me, uh, present, and he can't make it, he's moving and out, and our zoning director is out sick, so we're missing half the process here. So I think what we might go forward with, if, if the board agrees, is have you guys present what you'd like to present, and, uh, make sure we do our administrative things and make sure we're all on the, on the same base. Is that reasonable?
I might just have a request. We, uh,
Sure.
We had, uh, Joe Clay's plan for land, um, on South Harrison Street. I'm going, sorry, I'm sitting up here just so I can be on the mic, um, or I guess I could have stand up there. But, uh, I guess, um, procedurally, we, we'd asked for some records so we could prepare as well, and, uh, we, we've not received any, uh, from our public records request. We were hoping to have some information shared with us regarding the nature of the violation beyond the limits of what's in the letter that was provided to us.
Okay, who'd you make the request to?
Uh, it was part of our packet that we presented to you guys and to the zoning inspector.
The, the, the problem happened there is we don't want to read this before, beforehand.
Oh, I tried to make sure that, uh, Mike was aware, uh, Inspector Cannon was aware of it beforehand, though, um, we, we do need to get a copy. As I would assume the board's going to get presented, so we don't necessarily want to present testimony in advance of his. Um, we'd really like to, uh, understand the nature of the violation and, uh, why, why it's been felt to be a violation before, um, responding to that, if that makes sense.
That seems like a fair request.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, and if we could get it in advance of the meeting, um, or the hearing, that would be helpful, uh, just so we could prepare. Um, I understand cross testimony and all that's part of, cross examination's a part of what, what comes through your board, so, uh, we will try to provide documentation in advance of the hearing as well for made aware when the, when that's being needed.
My, my question is, can you write that up tonight and present to our administrative secretary so she can make sure that record to get?
Um, I can provide a copy of what I provided to the board, just so you have that. Um, it does say public records request and it's, uh, um, it indicates exactly what we look.
Got a page?
It is.
Does it have a page number?
Yeah, it's, um, the public records request was on page nine. We tried to itemize specifically what was needed in order to prepare for the hearing. Um, I tried to email him last week, he must have been sick, so, uh, maybe, uh, we can, um, we can reconvene after we have a chance to provide, provide that or here, review that as well.
Okay.
And then I, I think we had a few individuals that we'd asked to be in attendance, um, are you com, are you asking for their attendance for the hearing, or is that something that we need separately?
You say so witnesses presented on your side?
Correct, um, there, there were a few that we asked for subpoena, um, that I mentioned at the last meeting was, uh, just to make sure that they were in attendance. Um, the prior zoning inspector, the current zoning inspector, as well as the prior owner of the property, we'd like to make sure that they're served notice of the meeting and asked to testify.
That's on page eight?
Uh, that is on page eight. Yeah, I tried to be as thorough, and I, that's why I tried to say last time, there's a lot in there, but, um, I kind of wanted the request to stand on its own merits for, um, what it is. Um, we do have additional stuff that we can present, but we'd like to understand exactly what, um, what we're being asked to respond to first.
Anything you want to present tonight?
Uh, beyond the written request, I, I don't believe so, I might ask, um, I'll stand up.
Yeah, anybody's going to, uh, present, please, please, this is the micro, microphone, state your name.
Sure. Jeffrey Sharp, I'm here on behalf of Mr. Neff. Um, at this point now, we'd like to see if you can and take some testimony from him. This is an appeals hearing, he has to justify the decision as part of our due process rights, we'd like to start there and then present the other evidence.
Okay, let me read out loud this, uh, in this packet here, this request for subpoena witnesses for the record here. Uh, this, this is from the application for administrative appeal submitted May nineteen, twenty twenty-five. It's made to the Harlem Township Board of Appeals, subject property is one-two-one-one-six Center Village Road in Westerville. The applicants are Derek and Lorraine Neff of New Albany, and an agent for application is Plan for Land LLC. And page eight of this application is the request for subpoena, subpoena witnesses in the courts with section five-one-nine-point-one-five. With the higher revised code, the Harlem Township Board of Zoning Appeals may compel the attendance of witnesses. The application hereby asks for notice of hearing to be sent to the applicant's, their agent, with the information provided on the cover of this request. Additionally, the applicant seeks subpoena for the following individuals. Uh, number one is Mike Cannon, Galena, the current Harlem Township Zone Inspector. Two is Mark Kurtz, Mark Kurtz?
Matt Kurtz.
Excuse me, Matt Kurtz, uh, the former Harlem Township Zone Inspector. And number three is Alan Leroy Garbrandt, uh, Center Village in Westerville, uh, the prior owner of the subject property. This is per the application appeal. And on page nine of the same application, there's a public records request. I'll paraphrase here a little bit. According to section twenty-eight point oh five, the Harlem Township zoning resolution, zoning inspectors asked to provide documentation of all public records applicable to this property. The other decisions like matters relative to their terms of Harlem Township Zone Inspector. Need to add any more to that?
Uh, yeah, one more item, I guess I should draw your attention to, on page eight, there's a request for stay that we discussed last month. Um, it, we did not receive follow-up on that and would like to request that to be activated tonight, uh, just for the sake, it, um, it would actually help the case. Um, the operation of the business on the site's been going on for two years, uh, three years? Twenty-one, four years, almost four years, and, um, in regards to the complaints and the nature of the complaints, they've been more, more frequently, um, exaggerated, but, or, um, expressed, but, uh, we believe that, uh, the nature of the use itself was not at question, and that's what the nature of why we're asking for the appeal is that it's a prior non-conforming use of the property or some form of a prior non-conforming use of the property. We'd ask that he has some rights to use it for business purpose. I think there's a statute that the higher revised code, uh, was instituted back in twenty-three, uh, that puts the onus on the township, uh, for, uh, taking if, um, if it's, if he's found to be in, um, compliance, uh, and for that reason, if he could operate minimal operations of the business, uh, such as what he's had here before while he was under notice, uh, we feel it would help the case, um, because if, if neighbors wanted to document concerns or complaints, that would give them an opportunity to do so as well. Um, he's not been using this property, and as a result of the, the delays that we've had, um, we'd like to, uh, to make sure that he's got some economic return of the property. Uh, we do not feel that it's going to be a, an ongoing nuisance to the neighbors. And if it is, we happy to talk about that at the hearing, but we'd ask for you to stay the enforcement of the violation of notice so that he can bring a few trucks onto the property. Yeah, so the authority of the zoning.
Yeah.
Let's, let's maintain order. I, I can respond to that, the, the, the authority of the zoning inspectors compelled upon the board of zoning appeals as a part of the appeal. Um, you have the power of the zoning inspector, and that's why we, we initially made the request of him, but once the appeal was filed, we made the request of you.
So I guess my question, and maybe further in there, let me just rephrase that a little bit. But you're not suggesting the, uh, zone inspector doesn't have the authority to, to issue a cease and desist?
Well, we, we are in, yeah.
He has authority.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
So you're suggesting the decision that was breached by the zone inspector is what you're looking at?
Yeah, yeah, there's, the nature of the cease and desist is all activity must stop on the property. Um, we're saying that there's a prior non-conforming use of this property, and there should be some viable business use of this property, uh, to not be able to use the property at all, it's his investment, he's made improvements to this property in good faith. Um, he's not saying that this is going to prolong the situation. What we're really saying is this would provide an opportunity for the neighbors, if they do want to see, um, to file complaint, they could record noise, whatever they find concern with. It would provide an opportunity for you guys to build a case of what we, what safeguards might need to be in place when you find it a non-conforming use, which we hope you do. Um, but when you find it a non-conforming use, what type of safeguards need to be in place to help protect the neighbors from a further nuisance? But we, we do not believe that the nature of the complaints were because of his property.
I, I just never know, we, we had the ability to, to issue a stay, I, you know, I just this, of course, being the first one, we had to do this too, so.
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff might be able to address that, uh, from a legal perspective, um, I just know from practice perspective, but I'll let him discuss why.
Our position is that the board does have the legal authority, there is legal precedence for that, is my understanding. Um, I didn't know this was going to be an issue, so I didn't prepare anything for you today to hand in your hands to say, hey, here's what it is, but not being able to use the property even for a short term creates a damaged situation, and we're trying to avoid that. We're trying to avoid having other issues, we're trying to resolve this all here at the local level.
Let me ask this, um, the board of zoning appeals would have the authority to hear the appeal of the zoning inspector's decision at the hearing. Um, but if we're not going to go forward with that hearing, do we have the authority to overturn his decision?
My belief is you do, I mean, you guys are welcome.
Well, let me clarify that, not overturn, uh, stay. All we're asking for is the stay the enforcement, so that they can have reasonable use of the property until the hearing.
And what's our, what's our basis for having legal authority to, to do that?
It's done quite commonly from what I understand, so it's, it, the, the basis is you're, you're not, uh, um, ordering, uh, cease and desist on a property that may be subject to approval of some form of, uh, use of the property.
Basically pauses the button.
Yeah.
It doesn't allow further damage on either side, it keeps the status quo, it doesn't do anything towards the violation that's set for the appeal date.
Without legal representation and without the zoning inspector here.
We're, we're kind of missed it. We're kind of missed up with that.
Yeah, but with them not being here, I understand what you're saying about the stay. This has been a long process, I'm not going into going into that as far as whether it was legal or not, but it's gone on for four years, another two to four weeks. On the, on the total, I don't think it's going to make that much difference because we need to get it right. If we do the stay, we want legal counsel, if we don't do the stay, we won't be in council. We're not lawyers.
Thankfully.
And that's my opinion.
Mm-hmm. Need to make a motion for that? Assume.
Well, if there's a motion, if we're not going to make a decision on this, if you're requesting a stay or to, you know, act on that.
Until we have legal counsel. If you guys want this on the record, I can't hear anything.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, that, that's, that's fine, I'll, I'll ask the question again, I, I wouldn't know if we needed to have a motion on this, I, I may even have to do it by motion and, and vote, and, and then, uh, because we have no legal counsel and the zoning inspector here, we're kind of at the, at the crossroads, we have to do something to get this moving on, and we don't have the information to do it, so. Any other? Think I'll make a motion if you even have any questions or?
Let me ask another question, so on page, on your request for stay in enforcement, you guys reference higher revised code five-one-nine-point-one-four A through D. And I'm just, I'm not familiar with that code. If you guys would like to make any other, uh?
That's the authority of the board, Joe Clay's Plan for Land, one South Harrison Street, um, if I need to say that again. Um, that is the authority, uh, granted by the higher legislature for the board of zoning appeals. Uh, A through D, I believe A is appeals, uh, through, um, variances and conditional uses, so it's, it's just your authorizing statute that allows you. I, I was only referencing it saying that within that, uh, you have the authority to stay enforcement while a case is being tried.
So before I make a motion, we want to put a time and place, at least to continue.
Sure.
I'm fine with that.
Look at the calendar and see what.
Or this discussion or for the?
For the hearing.
For the hearing itself, okay. So we, we have a couple outstanding items will need to be done before that, there's the, the public records request, it may take some time. Is it request for subpoena of witnesses, I'm not sure how long that takes.
I, I have no problem with, with, um.
I would need five, five to seven days for the public records request. So I only need a week for that.
Okay.
I just, I'm thinking next BZA meeting in June, or in July, what month, what month is this? This is July. Slipped that thing is.
Twenty-first. Discussion is, uh, putting this to the next BZA meeting in July. I guess have any comment on that? Input?
Yeah, so the more time the better, I, I hate to say that in request with the stay, but the, the reason why is we would like to see the request for their public records honored and the, a chance to present you with an argument. Um, so at least a couple weeks to respond, I'm not sure how long that public records request is going to take, and then if there's, um, the public notice that needs to be issued to these individuals that we'd like to have testify, and anybody that the zoning inspector would like to have testify on their behalf, um, we'd like to make sure that, um, there's ample time for that, uh, so even an additional week, there might not be a bad idea, um, but we're open to, yeah, the open to the twenty-first, but maybe, uh, just making sure that there's ample time for all of that to occur. We'd assume that was going on the last month, I apologize, we, uh, that, I, I tried to leave you with the data, but essentially say, hey, there's, there is a process that we need to fulfill here.
If I may add, Jeff Sharp, if something in the public records requests alerts to a name of somebody else that we may need to testify, we want the reservation to be able to have time to serve them and have them here. So, at, at this point, I think you're better off, in my own personal opinion, you're better off the twenty-eighth or after, but I'll leave that to you guys.
I think we get it all done by twenty-first.
The first July?
Yeah. But maybe I'll, I'll make up some kind of motion.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the process to subpoena witnesses, if anybody has the information on that, how long it might take. Um, I'm basically going to go back to the prosecutor.
Yeah, Corey should be able to take care of that from, uh, typically just use the sheriff's office to, uh, to make sure that they're, they sign for the notice. And then typically those expenses are logged as a part of our application fee, so if, uh, i- if they need to be assessed, they'd be assessed to whatever parties that at risk, I guess, whatever the word is, I don't know the proper legal term for that, but whoever, whoever you don't find in favor of may be liable for those expenses, I guess that'd be a way to say it. And if we can help in any way, let us know.
Thank you. So we're looking to revisit this on the next regular scheduled meeting?
Yeah.
We go, I mean, if we go to the twenty-first, that's thirty days. I don't see why all of that couldn't happen in thirty days.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
I think taking it out to twenty-eight and only adds an extra week if we can't get it done in thirty days, what's another weekend to do?
You've got an extra weekend here, twenty-first is good. Yeah, that makes sense.
Twenty-first. Seven thirty-five.
Seven thirty-five. So we're looking to recess this hearing until July twenty-first and seven thirty-five.
Yeah, we need, we need other issues. And reasons.
Want to vote on the stay?
We're doing separate?
Yes.
Uh, the first motion I'd like to make is, uh, regarding the, the stay of, of the zoning, zoning inspector cease and desist. I can make the motion that we issue the stay as, as requested, and that will be enforced until our July twenty-first meeting. Amen or second? Whatever.
We're talking about recessing this meeting until July twenty-first, reconvene the appeal, and then, uh,
We're doing, you can do the stay, do the stay first as, as the one motion, then we'll do recess. The second motion.
Yeah, I saw some confusion as, as.
Okay.
Yeah.
Still confused.
I think we should have done, done it the other way around, we're talking about recess, recessing this hearing until next month on the twenty-first. And then we're going to, talking about separately, we're talking about a stay, voting on a stay until that time.
Okay.
Okay, we got it now.
We kind of did that a little bit backwards.
My, my first motion is on the stay, because once we recess, then that, then we're done, we can't make any, any more decisions, so. My, my first motion is to, to grant the stay till July twenty-first meeting of the zoning, right, of the zoning inspector's assistance, assist and deceased order. And that's the motion, so let me second that.
I second it.
Yeah, roll call vote.
Pat Ferris.
Uh.
Steve Eisenbrow.
Those are back, yeah.
No.
Keith Campbell.
Aye.
Bill Gallagher.
No.
Amy Richardson.
Aye.
You know, he's still, still Smith, because he's, he's a hundred and fifty.
So the motion is passed to stay the, uh, cease and desist order until uh, the July twenty-first meeting, which will bring this hearing back from recess, which we now need to vote on.
My second motion is to recess this hearing until July twenty-first, seven thirty-five PM. At the, we'll be at the Harlem Township Firehouse, whatever the address is, thirty-eight eighty-three or something like that.
I second, I'll second that. Uh, roll call.
Pat Ferris.
Aye.
Steve Eisenbrow.
Aye.
Keith Campbell.
Aye.
Bill Gallagher.
Aye.
Amy Richardson.
Aye.
Okay, so motion passed, pushing the recess until July twenty-first, at seven thirty here.
Seven thirty or seven thirty-five.
Uh, excuse me, seven thirty-five. Thank you. Well, we have our homework to, uh, request subpoenas. Public records request is.
Yes, we'll get it. We'll get it, I think, for you on that, let me get.
Ferris, is there any way?
Is there any way that the residents on the list, first decision, as first provided, um, will be notified? Because obviously, none of the stars. And they're under the impression that they're staying, or what, you know, that they're not allowed out right now. It's not fair to them that, you know, they well, towards the way the neighbor get upset and have to.
I don't know that the neighbors were told there was a stay. I did notify them. And I would have been the notifier. So I don't know that they even knew there was one.
You you mailed all the letters out, right?
About this hearing, but not about not about there being a cease and desist on the property. That's not something that we notified the neighbors about.
Just there was a hearing.
Yep.
So what what are you suggesting?
Well, I was just saying, well, what the neighbor, I mean, they know at this point they're not operating.
Does it happen, yeah?
Because they have, um, what I was gonna say is, just as a courtesy, let them know because they're gonna be operating and the neighbor's gonna be thinking they're operating, you know, against the wishes of the township, which is not accurate.
Well, we could not, we can notify them, I guess. We got the addresses. We could, we could do that, but.
And we may want to inform them of a new date, a new date, yeah.
Yeah, I'll send letters out for them in hearing.
In hearing and and let them know that there's, yeah, two decisions. Yeah, good point, I think. Thank you.
It will be on website too, so.
Well, I have questions.
Yep.
Um, wasn't that the purpose of of get, giving them a stay? So that they could operate and see if the neighbors were going to complain?
Yeah.
That wasn't the purpose of it?
Yeah.
I thought that that's.
That was an argument that was.
Yeah, so I I was gonna say honorably, yes, um, that's exactly what we were getting at, but uh just it doesn't have to be discreetly. If you want to notify them, that's fine. Um, and you could even let them know that they have the right to document until the hearing, anything that would be concerning to them so that that could be presented as uh testimony of maybe the nature of the use. Um, we're not asking for the use to be approved in entirety of what was operating. We're understanding that we're going to be asking for a substitution of a nonconforming use uh, in compliance with your code, and therefore, whatever happens on the property will be more in line with what they would expect post approval anyhow. So the hope is they're not gonna see the nature of the complaints that they saw before. But yes, encourage them to document it if they could, so that we could see that as well. Thank you.
That's right. Righty, so. Have we actually recessed this hearing?
Yes, to time certain, to to the July twenty first of.
Okay, so we both, all right, so we're out. We're officially out, right?
My next question for you is, could you be be here the twenty first? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, back to our regular meeting agenda here. Let's see what we got, um. The table is reading the minutes from past meetings. We didn't have any new business I'm aware of. Anybody else have anything they wanted to bring up? I didn't, and I don't think we have any reports from committee reports or zoning reports today. So I guess we're up to the uh the prior minutes.
Hey.
Take a look at those, those were all in our package, right?
Yeah.
Somebody spelled my name wrong. Uh, can you have that?
Who did that?
Well, I don't know, I don't point thing.
Which one, which, which? Yes, which which one is still wrong? All the three of them?
Hopefully, because I'm not being facetious.
April twenty first, the bottom of the second page, I got a G in there, another G.
No. Okay.
Well, some people do call.
I was putting some extra flair in it.
April twenty first.
He said towards the bottom, like the first page.
Yeah, it's the last uh line. Last line on the second page.
It was like old, because I think I read them before, and then we, so we didn't. We didn't approve them last time.
Yeah, we did not, we were way behind.
Okay.
Thank you so much for being able to be here last minute.
Thank you.
And May nineteenth, page four, next to the last line, legal, have a little something actually here. Semi colon. I think.
Yes.
Page four, next to the last line.
Mr. Campbell voiced that he felt bored, should consult legal and legals misspelled. Just take the uh, semi colon.
On April twenty fourth.
I'll pass that, yeah, okay, twenty one or twenty.
No.
There is an order, just uh.
Make a motion, we approve May nineteenth, nine twenty five, regular business meeting, communicating correction as corrected.
My second.
All favor?
Aye.
I just have it. May nineteenth, about the April twenty first. Yeah, well, motion to approve April twenty first meetings without uh modification. Well, was this the one with Gallagher? Okay, with, okay, as of.
That's correct.
That's corrected.
Second.
Good second, all favor?
Aye.
Nice having. And April twenty four. I move we approve April twenty fourth meeting minutes uh as submitted.
One second.
The second?
All favor? What's happening? We cut up on our meeting minutes? So our next, so our action items take away from this hearing. Or, what do we do with that? So we need to look in the subpoenas, we need to look in the uh the public records request. Look for something else. Oh, we're gonna send out notification to the neighbors.
Neighbors, yeah.
That's a, I think that's a good.
You'll have to uh check with Mike or anybody to see if they want somebody subpoenaed.
And.
The way, will I have to get Cory to do that for us?
Of course I can do it. What I'm saying is, before you just say, here's the two subpoenas.
Yeah.
Like, Mike wants somebody else, you might, right, might be four or five.
Right.
Yeah, and.
That shouldn't take too many days. I mean, we'll be good for this. I don't either.
Usually subpoenas fourteen days from the time that if the court has it, then gets served.
Do we have written complaints submitted formally from neighbors?
That's all Mike's.
We don't have anything.
They've all just called in or.
Okay, so that's up to Mike to help us. Yeah, so, so we haven't, as a board, received any information, any documentation, any
Can we?
Any uh presentation from the.
We make a record request as a board?
Well, yeah, and so, yeah, I think we would like to have that same documentation that's, that's be public record or anything else that the zoning inspector liked to present to them.
Whenever public records requested. That.
Yeah, whatever they get.
Yeah. Where Joe plays, then get his public record, we like to have a copy too.
I mean, in my mind, the zoning inspector would present his case much like a prosecutor, present his case with his evidence, with his documentation. Right, and he would present that evidence to us at that time. Yeah, yeah. And then the defendant in this case, or whatever you might call that, would have the opportunity to answer those. It was uh, yeah. I have to, well, I I would just say. I mean, we got these last time. I didn't realize they were embedded in these requests. I know for action.
Well, that's why they didn't have anything, because we received the packets. I don't go through the packet.
Right.
Because I mean, I don't have anything to do with your decision making, so I only go through the packet to find the things I need for public notices.
And they were handed out and we, you know, we kind of did a quick skim. And I never got to the back. No, that would be. And I'm not even sure I knew that it would be in our jur- jurisdiction to subpoena someone.
What happens if they don't show up? What happens if the subpoena person doesn't show up?
I don't know.
I don't know, I have no idea.
Because, because, the reason I say that, because I was, I was informed by someone else that I was, was the zoning commission did or whatever. That they subpoenaed someone and they never showed and nothing ever happened. You know.
That's not surprising.
I don't know.
I was trying to read some of the higher revise, who, what happens if they cease and desist, and there wasn't. I'd still be looking for the next chapter.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's.
Do you want, but did you sign those minutes?
No, I'll put them in the big book.
Oh, and then, sorry, okay, fine. Yeah, I I just, so. Yeah, whatever, just a comment.
So, so I did research last month. The the, the previous. Well, these, before I came on the board. And it was similar but different, because the zoning was in, then the zoning was out, then the zoning came back in, and when the zoning came back in is when the zoning inspector cited them for for having this legal business supposedly. It didn't get as complicated as this. With, there was attorneys there, but there was no uh there was a court reporter. There was a court reporter, but they was, we was, they were doing court reporters for every hearing back then. Back in those days, because court reporters were cheap.
Yeah.
So if it was a, if it was a hearing, it was a reporter there. So when they decided, when when we went to recording stuff. We didn't need to have court reporters, because it gets the expenses nowadays than it was back then. Um, so I went to read the minutes and it said, these people were here and this, that, these people testified. And that, all that is in the, in the minutes of the court reporter, they needed to get a copy of that, so this is like nineteen ninety. Records from court report, you probably, probably that court report, probably ain't even in business anymore, probably that record is gone. I don't know, I didn't, so.
Did you have the addresses to all the neighbors, that in that packet, and you're you're good with that and uh.
But yeah, so there was, it was, it was the only one I can remember. Being the VCA for appealing the zoning inspector's decision, and it didn't get to a cease, desist, and deceased, test order. When the zoning inspector cited them. They came to the VCA and appealed it to the VCA. It was not nearly as contentious as this is. And I don't think neighbors complained, I think it was just the zoning inspector decided it.
I make a motion to adjourn. We have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at eight sixteen.
Hey.
We can shut off for a stop. Thank you for coming to this one, and especially, and hopefully you can make it to the next one.